...of May 19th. We'll note that all commissioners are present. And the first item of business for your consideration is the order of business. And Attorney Coling has some changes to the agenda. Mr. Coling?
Mr. President and Commissioners, there are four items on tonight's agenda that we will be removing from your consideration. We expect to bring those back at the next meeting. The first one is Item 4B, the 15th Street Agreement. The second item is Item C1, the Pinecrest Development Agreement. Then C2, the Great Lakes Development Agreement. And the final plat for Great Lakes Subdivision, Item D on that page will also be removed. Again, we expect to bring those items back for your consideration at the next City Commission meeting, but they were not ready for approval for tonight.
So, C1, C2, and D3 are all off?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
There is one item I guess we would like to add to the agenda, and that is a report for your consideration on the commercial reevaluation process.
And that's under reports? Or where did you say that was?
4D, yes, under reports.
4D, okay. Okay, are there any other changes to the agenda? Hearing none, would there be a motion to accept the order of business with the changes Mr. Coling highlighted?
So moved.
Second.
We have the motion and the second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries. We'll move to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Not, would there be a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second, any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. So, we'll go to the non-tight table agenda. The first item there, 4A, is a corrective deed regarding the Dickinson Elks Building. This is the old downtown building. And Mr. Coling will introduce that item.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners. This is a corrective deed for the Dickinson Elks Building, the Old Elks Building Downtown. There is a new ownership group that has taken control of that entity. And as part of their due diligence, they have discovered an error in the original deed from the city to Dickinson Elks Building. This corrective deed would correct that error and would allow them to clear title on the property. City staff do recommend approval, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions, Mr. President.
Are there any questions? Not, would there be a motion to approve the corrective deed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second, any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. We'll move to Item C then, and that's to hear the Human Resource Monthly Report, and HR Director Nomenek will give that report.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. Right now with police officer, we've kind of sound like a broken record, but we still have openings for that. I think at this time, we have two open positions. And we are still taking applications, so not at the interview portion yet for that. We also are going to be hiring a full-time animal control officer, a second one that we had gotten approval for this year, so that position is still open. We had an internal opening for patrol sergeant, so that was filled. And also had a senior patrol officer promotional opportunity within the police department. They're still in the interview process there. Sanitation Department, we've filled all of our laborer positions. We have one operator position open right now for that, and a couple seasonal positions open for sanitation. And we will be doing interviews for the full-time position this week. Street Department, we've got one operator position open. We did make an offer this week, so we have one filled and one left to go. So we're making a little progress there. Water Utility Operator, we've got quite a few positions there with the wastewater treatment plant. Stage to be open real soon. We've not had much luck at all with a chief operator or operators. We've got three operator positions and a chief position. We actually had a couple applicants. We'll be doing interviews for those operators this week, so hopefully those will work out. Custodian has been a little bit of a difficult position for us to fill. We're trying to fill one for the Public Works Building and have interviews scheduled for that this week as well. Property Appraiser, as you know, we were trying to hire one property appraiser and possibly two, or have a senior property appraiser, or maybe an internal promotion for that. We have, we're really looking for someone with some experience in that area, and not many applicants, as you might be aware. But we still are searching for that. We had an administrative assistant position open up for the Public Works Building, and we were able to fill that. We just made an offer and was accepted. HR Assistant, I just had an opening for that position, and we hired internally, so that will be filled soon. And Museum Assistant is open another day, and we are getting mounds of applications for that one.
Really?
Yeah, well, well over 100.
Really?
So, I don't know why, but the other positions, we can't get five. Any questions?
Maybe we can detour them.
That's what I thought. Maybe we could get them a CDL, and they could work in some departments part of the week and see them the rest.
Okay.
President Johnson, if I could. I just wanted to mention that I was able to attend the Manufacturing Roundtable sponsored by Stark Development, and local job service manager Mary Erlocker was there, and she reminded the group that we still have just under 1,800 open positions in Stark County and a about 1.7 percent unemployment rate. So the hiring environment remains very, very competitive.
All right. You probably don't scan your report into our software here, but there's a, that report and a couple others are always, or not always, sometimes 90 degrees off.
Okay.
And I don't know how to rotate it, if it is rotatable.
I can show you how.
Can you show me how? All right. Then it's my problem.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson.
Well, these younger guys are better at technology than I am, so, okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll go to reports by the City Administrator. Mr. Kessel?
Thank you, President Johnson and Commission. We have a thank you notes that are in, and I won't discuss, you can read those at your leisure. But I do want to mention that we have a Deputy City Administrator for Finance Administrative Services position that is open. We have done an initial Skype interview with one candidate that we are interested in. We would like to bring Mr. Chris Crane to Dickinson. We are excited about his background and would like to get an opportunity to meet with him and to discuss a possible fit between Mr. Crane and the City of Dickinson for this position. And as a reminder, this is a replacement for the Finance Director position. We have added some high-level finance duties that bumped this category up to a Deputy City Administrator position. We are planning to bring Mr. Crane in on May 27th. We have a rather rigorous interview process that we will expose him to, to make sure that we are making the right decision, and he is a good fit for us. I just wanted to remind the Commission that because we have added duties to this job description, that also means that we are, have to drop some off, so that it remains a position that can be fulfilled within a reasonable timeframe. So that means that we would like to bring forth to the City Commission either a, another accounting staff to take on some of those duties. I would like to have Mr. Crane, assuming that we make an offer and he accepts, have input into that decision at what level of the organization that should come to. It could come in at an accountant level, or it could come in at more of a clerk level. If Mr. Crane is not the, if we can't come to an amicable agreement, then what I'd like to do is bring forth a recommendation to you after consulting with city staff. But I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page with regard to this position and the need for an accounting position in addition to the Deputy City Administrator position. Are there any questions about that process, or about either? If not, then I'll go on to my next, which is the subsidy meeting. This is the, kind of the unofficial kickoff of the 2015 budget process. Every year, we have a meeting where we ask local organizations that meet our criteria to come in and make a request for subsidies. That meeting is scheduled for July 21st, and it'll be held here in the Commission Chambers. I believe we're starting that meeting at 1:00 PM. We'll make sure that we get an invitation out to all of you to nail down the details And then the next item on the agenda is the capital improvement plan. Just two updates, I believe I brought your attention before, that we remain in conversations with Wells Fargo. That began as a $20 million loan. If we ink that loan, it'll probably be, have a face value of 15 million. I believe that we will finance around 10 million with that loan. We have been working closely with our current bank, which is American Bank Center, and also negotiating terms of another loan with them. That may increase from the 20 million that we originally expected to something slightly larger than that. We'll certainly keep you abreast of any changes, but I wanted to make sure you were aware of that. I also wanted to let you know that we've reinstituted the discussion in Dickinson format. We used to do interviews to try to educate the public. We are starting those again with a primary focus on letting the public know about all of the CIP projects and how it will impact either services and/or traffic flow. You heard us before report that we've engaged a public information officer contract to help us with this. We plan to produce the video weekly on Mondays and make, have it present on Channel 19. We'll also, and you can find this video on our website as well, so that you can view it at your pleasure 24/7. It will also be, if you want to follow us on Twitter at the City of Dickinson, or like us on Facebook at Success Is Always Under Construction. All of the blog updates with regard to contracts, or excuse me, with regard to the projects will be available there. And if you give us your email address, we'll send those out to you, so that the public can be informed as quickly as we can. So, with that, that concludes my report, unless there's any questions from the Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Are there any questions or comments for the City Administrator? All right, well, we'll move on then to public safety, and we'll hear from Chief Seavock.
President Johnson and Commissioners, tonight we want to just bring forward some information for you and for the viewing public, that effective May 6th, the Stark County Emergency Manager and Stark County Commission declared a fire emergency and burn ban, which is in place. The ban does include the City of Dickinson, we do have to comply with it. The ban is also tied to something that's known as the fire range land danger, the fire danger range land index, which means that it's not a complete solid blanket ban. If the weather conditions permit, burning is allowed. If the weather conditions are in the high, very high or extreme category, burning is not allowed, nor is the discharging of fireworks. This may become important as we roll into that season, because a violation of this penalty, or a penalty for the violation of this burn ban is a Class B misdemeanor, maximum sentence 30 days in jail, and a $1,000 fine. And it does cover the City of Dickinson also, our citizens need to know that. But they also need to know that there's a couple of places that they can check the status of the Range Land Index. When is that? WWW weather.gov/business, or StarkCountyND.gov, or DickinsonFire.gov. We have a link on there. If the Range Land Fire Danger Index is in the low or moderate category, basically it's business as usual. If it's in the high, very high, extreme, or red flag category, there's cause for concern. They definitely need to contact somebody before they burn. And there's definite restrictions that come into play, not just for the county population, but for the city population also. And that's why we wanted to bring that forward, so our viewing public would hear that tonight. And next up, we have, if you have any questions on this, I'd be glad to take them. And if not, we'd like to continue with the report from...
Just a minute. Are there any questions on the burn ban? As long as you're up here, can you make any comments about Saturday's fire event in downtown Dickinson?
Well, as most of the public, I guess, knows, there was a fire in the building that housed the Bogies Restaurant. There was extensive damage to the Bogies Restaurant on the first floor, and fire did extend to the second floor. At this point in time, we know that the fire started in the kitchen area of the restaurant. And we'll be working with insurance companies and with insurance agents to better define exactly what we, at this point in time, we do have our ideas as to exactly where and exactly what, but we need to talk with the insurance people also. A lot of the public knows that one of our firefighters was taken from the scene under distress, taken from the scene by ambulance to St. Joseph's Hospital. That firefighter was released. He's doing okay. He's got some follow-up work that needs to be done, but that turned out okay. Again, damage, extensive damage to the Bogies Building, smoke damage to adjacent properties.
Chief, I'm pretty impressed that the fire was pretty much contained to the one building in the old downtown section of Dickinson, as would be true for many communities. These buildings are just wall-to-wall. So, can you talk a little bit about response time and, you know, why we were able to contain this to essentially one building?
Yes, Mayor, I'd be glad to do that. As a matter of fact, it, you know, we were able to hire some personnel over the last couple of years. This was one of those particular days where we in fact had two full-time personnel on duty at the station at the time the call came in. And we had a good and rapid response from some close-by volunteers. That played into this critically. We were able to mount a quick interior attack. As we gathered more people, we continued an aggressive interior attack. Now, in the first 45 minutes of this firefight, we did not have enough people on scene, and we used our mutual aid agreement with Dickinson Rural. They responded with some personnel to help us out. But that initial truck getting there, that initial hose line coming into play, had everything to do with the fact that we had people there that could do that.
And had we not been able to respond, are you that quickly, or how confident are you that we could have confined it to one building?
This was a very similar situation to the Old Elks Club, in that the fire on the first floor found an elevator shaft, and that's how it was transmitting itself to the second floor, and in fact, to the roof. There was enough heat buildup, and the fire was moving rapidly enough that, it was a matter of minutes. And a matter of minutes would have changed the face of this thing dramatically. And I lose my confidence accordingly. And as longer we would have stretched out that ability to mount that initial attack, the less likely we would have been able to contain it the way we did.
How about your water supply? Did we have adequate water supply to...
We did. We had, we had two trucks hooked to hydrants that were actively pumping. We had a third, the latter truck, on standby, ready. Vellard, the pressures on Vellard are pretty good. As you move to the north, even just a block, First Street, they start to drop off. But for what we had in use, we were okay, at that point.
And how long did you have to apply water to the fire?
Well, the initial, we, let's see. I think it took a little over an hour before we called control time on the active firefight. But due to the construction of these older buildings, and Commissioner Steiner was able to walk through here the other day and can testify to that, they were built well in their day. That type of construction, however, has a lot of void spaces, hides a lot of things, plaster and lath, and then avoid space and compostable materials behind those walls. And it becomes backbreaking, labor-intensive work to open up the walls and to open up the ceilings, checking for fire extension. Our last apparatus and our personnel, our last personnel left the scene around midnight that night, following that fire, checking for fire extension, trying to get it out in the elevator shaft. We eventually opened the elevator shaft on the roof in order to get it out. So, actual control of the fire was probably about an hour, maybe just a bit more than that. By the time we were done with every little hotspot, or what the best we could do to make sure we got every hotspot, it was just about midnight.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments here?
Okay. We have a report on the spring cleanup campaign. I'd like to ask Fire Prevention Specialist Deb Barrows to come forward to give that. She's instrumental, a key individual in putting this thing together, and she's got some good information for you. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me. I guess we just want to report a little bit on the campaign to give the citizens a report, because we did have a good response from a lot of groups this year and a lot of people. So, that was wonderful, because usually we don't get that. It started on May 3rd and continued through May 10th. During those two Saturdays, the Baylor Building was open until noon. So, Erin Proust said that was well-used, but now they're not open anymore on Saturdays. That's discontinued. We had three locations where groups could pick up garbage bags during the spring cleanup. Those bags are donated by the Dickinson Park and Recreation Department. The three locations were here at City Hall, the Chamber of Commerce, and at the Fire Department. And we had a total of 29 groups that participated in that program of collecting the garbage bags, asking us for areas where they could go clean. And we issued a total of 976 bags, and a whole box went to the Women's Correction Facility from New England. And maybe Sean, you can talk about that a little bit later. We had six groups that called the Fire Department, asking for areas to clean, but of course had their own bags and said that they did not need ours. So that was, that was really great. The Dickinson Park and Recreation Department also provides a day pass to the West River Community Center, or a pass to Patterson Lake for those that wish to participate in that during the spring cleanup. So groups had the opportunity to say, yes, we cleaned and will take this many passes. Of those passes, 144 were given to the West River Community Center and 46 passes to Patterson Lake. In the City of Dickinson, we also have a program called Adopt a Roadway. So I don't know if there's a lot of people that realize that takes place. It is a signed agreement. They are committed to cleaning at least three times a year for three years. They get a sign provided at the beginning of the roadway and at the end, and the roadway has to be at least a mile in length. We have currently six groups that have adopted six roadways. And there are more roadways, obviously, that can be adopted, but again, it's quite a commitment. So we do have groups that will clean certain roadways every year, but don't adopt it because they don't feel they have the manpower or the people to go out three times a year at minimum, that being May, July, and September. And if they see their roadway is a little bit dirtier, then they can opt to go out more often. So it just depends on which roadway you get. I just wanted to say that if anybody's interested, they can call the Fire Department. We can take a look at our roadways that are adopted, and if they have a special preference, they can adopt one. We invite anybody interested in that. Again, we feel the campaign was a success. We had the most calls wanting information on how this worked. I know that Erin Proust was very good in getting a newsletter out through his monthly newsletter, or quarterly, I'm not sure, I shouldn't speak out of turn. But it had a lot of information on the spring cleanup campaign this year. We were able to coordinate that a little bit better and get the word out that it was taking place. I think we had a little bit of confusion, however, on what was being picked up at their residence next to the dumpsters. So we just need to do a little bit better education on what will be picked up, and if in doubt, call the Baylor Building and ask those questions, not the Fire Department, because that's not our expertise. We just help campaign organize it. But exactly what will the Refuge Department pick up at the dumpster site? So next year, we'll do a little bit better job of educating them, okay? And again, this is just a good start to help getting the city kind of like spring cleanup like we do in our homes, but it's an ongoing effort. We're going to be asking people to be real considerate about when you're putting garbage in dumpsters, bag it. Because when those dumpsters get picked up and dumped in, it's with the wind that we have in North Dakota, it could be spread throughout. So all this work that was done, sometimes is kind of for nothing, right? So, ongoing, again, just let's try to keep Dickinson clean, try not to litter, pick up what we can. It takes all of us, not just 29 groups or 30 groups of people. Okay? Thank you for listening. Any questions that I can help with?
Any comments, questions? Mr. Kessel?
Why can't just add to the New England that was mentioned with the prisoners that come? We are on Mondays now throughout the summer, having some New England prisoners come under proper supervision, clean some of our city streets that we've designated. As long as the days aren't too windy, they'll be here for an ongoing effort to clean up some of our high-trafficed areas. So, and I literally want to commend the staff, especially the Fire Department staff, for organizing this. It really made a difference. In the areas that I went and looked at, it made a big difference in how our community looks before and after this event took place. And if I could, President Johnson, based on the revised agenda, I have to apologize, I forgot about the change we made. There is an additional report from Assessor Hirschfeld with regard to commercial reappraisals. So I don't know if you want to do that before the 5 or after the 5 o'clock.
I think we could squeeze that in, so...
While he's coming to the podium, Chief Seavock didn't mention that he also hosted a career fire chiefs meeting in Dickinson this past week, where he had representatives from, fire chiefs from Bismarck, Mandan, Grand Forks, West Fargo, and so on. And the reports that I heard is that went very, very well. So kudos to Chief Seavock for hosting a good event.
Well, it sounds like the Fire Department has had a really busy May so far. Hopefully, you get a break here for a while. But thank you, and thank your volunteers for cleaning up, and your, and the volunteer Fire Department for the work they did. Mr. Hirschfeld?
Good evening, Mr. President, Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to explain the commercial eval. After long last, three years of waiting for this day, Vanguard Appraisals is in town as of today, and they're starting their revaluation of commercial properties for the 2015 valuation year. Right now, they have five appraisers in Dickinson, and they'll do that until their inspections are complete, and then they'll send their review appraisers out in August to review that initial work. In the valuation process of properties, there are three approaches to value. The cost approach is a method that City of Dickinson currently uses, and it's based off of current cost of construction. Sales approach is another method. That method is a comparison of similar properties, where you make adjustments for differences in those properties characteristics. And the sales are utilized within the sales ratio study, and that's where we determine our valuations. And the third approach to value is the income approach to value. This values properties by measuring similarities between rents and expenses of comparable properties in relationship to their sales prices. This is a more accurate valuation method when you consider income properties. Potential buyers are typically more concerned... Potential buyers are typically more concerned about having a 9% return on their investment than what the actual cost to build that building is, or any percentage as far as that goes. Last week, we sent out a request for income data. The City of Dickinson is moving forward with that income approach, so we're requesting that information from all property owners. If it is a owner-occupied building, then we just ask you to go ahead and write that on your, on the notice that you received, owner-occupied, and please return that. We won't bother you anymore. For tenant-occupied properties, such as apartments, hotels, office buildings, retail, or even some tenant-occupied shop buildings, we're asking that that information be returned on a voluntary basis. And none of this information will be kept in file. It'll be just for our rent and expense, for our information only. If we don't receive data back from apartments, we'll pick on them a little bit. We can glean information from the newspapers or websites as far as what current rents are, and we'll get our information that way if necessary. And we ask if anybody has any questions with the data that was sent out or what we're asking for, please give the assessing department a call. Any questions from the Commission this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Hirschfeld. Any comments, questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the timetable agenda. We do have a 5:00 item. This is for the Armstrong Corporation Water Injection Well Application, and Mr. Kubis will introduce this item.
Thank you, President Johnson, Commissioners. The application that you have in your packet is for the Armstrong Corporation, and the applicant intends to drill this well immediately south of an existing lodgepole oil well located south of the Hart River Municipal Golf Course. As it stated, the well will be a freshwater well that will be injected into that existing oil well to maintain the pressures in the well. And this new well will not generate truck traffic other than the trips needed to drill the well itself. The Dickinson Energy Committee has met with the applicant to discuss this well, and their recommendation is as follows: to, that the city allow the well to be drilled, and recommend that the cuttings be hauled off-site to a regional disposal site if economically feasible. If not feasible, then they'd ask that the pit liner be upgraded from the industry standard of a 16 or 20-mill thick liner to a 40-mill liner. As this is a public hearing, I think we would open it up, the applicant is in the crowd today, if you have any questions of them.
Okay, well, we'll declare the public hearing open. If anyone would like to comment regarding this issue, you may do so now. Come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. If the applicant is here, I think it'd be good to have you come to the podium, because if the Commission is asked to decide whether these tailings should be hauled away or go to the thicker liner, I think the condition was if it's economically feasible, they'd be hauled away. I think we'd be interested in hearing your comments on whether or not you believe it's economically feasible.
My name's Paul Clarus with the Armstrong Corporation. We discussed at the Energy Committee meeting this issue of the hauling or cuttings away. And as you know, our industry is governed by the North Dakota Industrial Commission, who we believe that has a very firm, or finger on the pulse of what's going on as far as, you know, drilling and producing oil and gas in the state of North Dakota. They've issued us this permit, not requiring us to haul cuttings away. We can appreciate the concern of the Commission and area residents, safety factors, obviously. We ourselves are residents of the city and county of Stark, and obviously, our reputation is very important to us, and we are concerned as well. Economically feasible, I don't think is all that plays into this decision. We have come up with, you know, preliminary numbers of it'll cost us $144,000 roughly to do this, extra work. And in the grand scheme of things, what's $144,000? You know, obviously, if it's your wish for us to haul these cuttings away, and this is going to make you feel more comfortable, we're willing to do that. But I think there's other issues at play here that are important to consider. With hauling the cuttings away, as we all know, anyone that's driven in the city of Dickinson in the last couple of years has noticed an increased amount of traffic. Everybody's commute is getting tougher and tougher every day. This traffic is not going to be pickup trucks and cars. This is going to be semis that are going to be hauling the cuttings away up to a location in Dunn County, therefore, increasing the traffic on Highway 22 going north. Where the well is located is, you know, obviously, I think everyone's aware that this well is located, and our facility is located right across from the golf course, which during the summertime, we believe is, you know, obviously, it's a higher-traffic area. And, you know, is it really in the public's safety to put more trucks on the road? Another issue is containment of these cuttings. And once that, those cuttings leave our location, we, as the Armstrong Corporation, Armstrong operating, have no control over those truck drivers on the road. Obviously, we talked about the safety issues. If there's a spill with one of those trucks, you know, has an accident, spills those cuttings outside of our location, all of a sudden, we have basically a non-contained spill. We believe that you hold those cuttings on our location. If there is a problem, we're there drilling the well after the well's drilled. I mean, we are there on that location on a daily basis. Now, anyone that's driven past our location right across from the golf course, it's open to the public for viewing, is a pristine location. We take great pride in our operation, and obviously, this is a very important operation for us. So, I mean, like I said, I think that the city can have confidence that we'll continue to operate in this manner. But as said, if this is truly something that the city is going to make you feel better and give you more confidence in our operation, we're more than willing to do this. But I think that keeping the cuttings on location and letting us solidify them in accordance with the state regulations are sufficient.
And the 40-mill liner is a thicker liner than normally the industry uses? And when you talk about $144,000, not $144,000 above the cost of the 40-mill liner, it's $144,000 to haul the...
Yes.
So, what's the additional cost for the 40-mill liner? I mean, you know...
You know what? We haven't actually put a pencil to that. I mean, it doesn't matter. I mean, to us, we'll do that. I mean, obviously, it's going to be more than what would be used. Is it significantly more? Like I said, it's, you know, it's a difference. I'm quite sure it's less than $144,000, but we're willing to do either one. You know, to add to that, you know, $144,000, I may have not mentioned that, but basically, we're talking about 75 loads, we've estimated, okay? Which equates to 150 truck trips in and out of that location. Okay? I don't think that we can discount the significance of that kind of traffic in this area. I mean, obviously, we're drilling an oil and gas well, or actually, we're not drilling an oil and gas well, but we're drilling a well, which is going to basically be drilled as if it's going to be a producer. This is, and to correct the record, we are actually, this is, there's going to be two wellbores on this location. We actually have a water source well, is where we're going to actually pull from Dakota Formation, which we permitted through the State Water Commission, and drill an injection facility, which is the second well on the location. So, going back to where I began, that statement is, you know, because we are having a drilling operation, you're going to have an increased amount of traffic to begin with. You know, it takes a certain amount of loads to get the rigs in, manpower, so on and so forth.
Two weeks ago, Mr. Armstrong, Mr. Kelly Armstrong explained, I'm going to just do this by memory, so if I get it wrong, please correct me, but that the pit would have this liner, the cuttings would go in there, these cuttings eventually solidify, and then they're buried under, I forget how many feet of top...
Four foot of grade.
How much?
Four foot of grade.
Four foot, okay. And that would be the process, and then that would sense be there forever.
That's correct.
And that's a pretty common thing in the oil field right now?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, there's, I mean, and I, you know, the past is, you know, what's gone on in the past, and we are fully aware of the political, you know, what's going on in the state of North Dakota, and everyone's very concerned about all the increased drilling and safety. So, I mean, what's gone on in the past? We understand that there's, in the half-section alone that we've got our two wells, there's four dry holes that were drilled there previous to us, which, you know, there's a buried cuttings pit for each one of those wells, in the direct vicinity of where we're talking about there. I think there's a total of seven. Okay? Now, that doesn't, you know, that was then. I mean, you know, doesn't necessarily mean it needs to be now, too, but that has gone on, and that's what's there currently. And the property itself that we're on, as I, you know, in my understanding, there's no, you know, future plans for development. This is farmland, and I expect that it'll probably continue to be farmland.
Are there other comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Clarus, you said 75 truckloads. Over what period of time?
Well, I suppose, I mean, it's going to take a process of, you know, we're going to drill the well first, but, you know, assuming that, you know, if we're going to do this, this will be done shortly after the drilling process is complete. So, I mean, it's...
Are we talking a week's time or a month's time?
Um, well, yeah, it's probably a week, a good week's time, or a couple of weeks' time of hauling, I suspect.
What is the trend that you're seeing? And I understand this isn't a Bakken well, but generally, with the Bakken play and whatnot, as far as cuttings pits and... What percentage are being hauled off-site?
Well, you know, like I said, I mean, we try to stay in tune with what's going on with the North Dakota Industrial Commission, and, you know, I think that, I mean, it obviously hasn't been implemented statewide, because they issued this permit without that condition. Are there certain circumstances? I think there probably has been some circumstances, but I think very limited in the event, you know. For instance, we ourselves have some experience with this. We drilled a well in eastern Dunn County where we were close to an aquifer. Okay? The Kildare Aquifer ran close to our, and we were not on top of it. We, in fact, we went to great lengths to find out whether or not we were on top of that aquifer. We moved our location to make sure we were off of it. In that event, we actually, ourselves, have hauled cuttings. And I think that that's probably one of the main, that is the reason that cuttings are getting hauled up. I know that there was some history up in the Ross area, that they were hauling some cuttings because of their proximity to an aquifer. So, like I said, not that it's not going on in the industry, I would not say it's a standard, though, unless you're close to an aquifer.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All right, thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that wants to speak to this issue? Not, we'll declare the public hearing closed, and I think that if you're, I guess, in favor of approving the recommendation by the Energy Committee, the only thing you have to do is decide whether or not these cuttings should be hauled away, or if the, I'll call it the traditional approach of leaving them in the pit and having the pit, you know, with the proper liner. Are there any comments or questions about that? Well, if no one will speak to it, I'll make a comment, or Mr. Jackson?
Well, I was just going to ask Mr. Kubis, maybe you could expand a little bit more on some of the discussions of the committee. You know, when I hear a recommendation that says if economically feasible, that makes it sound to me like, yeah, maybe it's important, maybe it's not. Can you help us give a better flavor for what the discussion was?
Well, there was quite a bit of discussion about specifically the hauling of these cuttings off-site, and it sounds like in previous meetings of the Energy Committee where they've convened to discuss drilling a well within the ETZ of Dickinson, this has been a continual discussion. They would actually like to formalize some policy in that regard, because the Energy Committee has no set, other than the ordinances that we have on the books for Dickinson, they're kind of an independent body making some recommendations. They understand that the cost can be quite high to haul this. The discussion at the meeting was the industry standard is, like Mr. Clarus said, to not haul the cuttings. They're stored onsite in most instances. I think there's certain agencies that require it. The Fort Berthold Reservation was one that requires it, that they be hauled off-site to a regional facility. From what I've found, no other municipalities have that as a requirement. Trying to do some digging in, Williston has some ordinances on drilling wells, but makes no reference to hauling the cuttings off. So, I think the general flavor of the committee was that, you know, if done correctly, that the 16-mill liner, or the 16 to 20-mill liner works, and that's why it's been made the industry standard. The main concern was the proximity to the Hart River, or Patterson Lake in this case. But they didn't want to, I guess, I don't want to put words in their mouth, but didn't want to push it, and that's why they left it open. I guess most of the folks on the committee were industry people that understand that the cost of hauling this is excessive, and this would be asking something well above the industry standard.
Thank you, Mr. Kubis. Are there other comments or questions?
President Johnson, I did have a conversation with Mr. Kelly Armstrong, as you previously mentioned, and he told me the cost of a liner would be between $45,000 and $70,000.
Any other comments? Well, I don't see the necessity of requiring the driller to spend, you know, if it's $70,000, to spend an additional $70,000 to haul it and introduce more truck traffic going essentially through the center of town. They're either going to go down Highway 22 or over States Avenue and connect back to Highway 22. I would think the option of the 40-mill liner would be sufficient myself. What do the rest of you think?
I would tend to agree, Mr. President. I think the 40-mill liner is above what the standard industry is, the industry standard, and I'd be comfortable with requiring them to install the 40-mill liner.
Anybody else?
Well, I guess that's, what's been on my mind through this whole discussion is that we don't have a policy. We're bringing this, it doesn't make any difference which company it is, we're bringing it new, and I think that this, whether it's this topic or a number of others that I can think of having to do with oil wells, you know, we've got fidelity to the west of town inching closer and closer to Dickinson with Three Forks Wells. We've had other companies drill wells in our ETZ. I think it's time we look at our whole policy as to location considerations, pipeline locations, and what we think we should be doing with pipelines in the vicinity of Dickinson. This topic could be part of that discussion. It's one thing for, whether it's Armstrong or any other company, to come in and know that we have a policy requiring filings to be taken off-site, rather than bespringing it at this point in time. this point in time. So, I tend to agree. I don't think it's necessary on this well, but I really would like to see an effort to back up and have staff take a, a whole new look at this, this question. This is coming, we've got this for years and years and years ahead of us, the likelihood of wells being drilled in the vicinity of Dickinson. I'd like to open up our whole policy and see what we can and can't do. And some of that policy may simply be guidelines, may simply be suggestions because we know we're limited with some of the things that we can do.
Any other comments?
President Johnson, Commissioner Jackson, if I may, that was actually another request, not specifically to this application, of course, but a request of the Energy Committee was, was to meet again as the Energy Committee with staff commissioners, if need be, maybe someone from the Industrial Commission, to start developing some, some real good policy. So, it's, it's published as an ordinance and the, the committee would be more than willing to have a, a special meeting to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Kubis. Other comments? Well, let's deal with this issue and then come back to the policy issue. But I, it sounds to me like there's kind of a consensus that we can go ahead and approve the well application with the forty mil requirement. And if, if that's a consensus, is there a motion to that effect?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second?
We have the motion, the second, is there further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. I think Mr. Jackson has made some excellent points with, you know, we have oil companies moving closer to Dickinson and, and we have Dickinson moving closer to oil companies. So, when he makes the point, it's not just about wells, it's pipelines and, and other infrastructure. It would be good to have some, some policy here. My concern would be that we may not have the expertise right on staff. I think it's a big enough issue that, that I would be in favor of retaining an outside consultant along with our staff and our Energy Committee to help guide us in, in doing this. So, maybe, you know, you as staff can put your heads together and think about that if, and come up with an approach. That would just be one, but it's an issue that is too important to just try to deal with on, on an individual, I think each individual well and try to make up policy as we go along. If there are no other comments, we've got two other timetable agenda items we'll get to. So, the five-ten is to hear from Rainey Engineering regarding Dickinson's Quiet Zone Assessment and Engineer Bob Swanson is, make that presentation, except I don't see Engineer Swanson in the audience.
I don't either. President Johnson, what I think we'd like to do is just postpone this presentation. It is not, there's nothing timely in terms of decision-making today that would prevent us from just postponing it to the next commission meeting.
Okay. Well, I guess he can't present if he's not here. So, we have five-twenty-five and that's to hear requests from the Dickinson Rough Rider Commission and Michelle Kovach is to make that request. I don't see Michelle here. Is there anybody from the Rough Rider Commission? Okay. Is there anybody here? Okay, we got some, I see, all right. Well, I think we can act on this Rough Rider Commission one. You saw her memo in the, in our, our commission book. I had an opportunity to meet with Mrs. Kovash not too long ago and they're, along with Rough Riders days, they're working to have an event or events to commemorate North Dakota's one-hundred-and-twenty-fifth anniversary of statehood, which would be in November of this year. And actually, the, the state has requested that some of the larger cities do this. And the request actually came to me a couple of months ago, I suppose. And I talked with Mr. Kessel. And since we're having a big Rough Rider celebration in July, end of June and first part of July, it seemed like to us that would be the time to do this as opposed to have this big event and then try to have an event later this fall. And so, we talked with the Rough Rider Commission. They were interested in doing this. There is a state committee that's handling this, so they've been in contact with that state committee. And there's a possibility to help offset their costs of doing an event. The state would, could come up with as much as ten thousand dollars. Well, the idea that Rough Rider Commission has come up with is to make the rodeo free this time around and use rodeo as a celebrating event. And, but in doing so, they give up quite a bit of revenue and the ten thousand dollars would not cover it. And so, I suggested, well, they asked for money and I suggested that they come before us, make their request. I think this qualifies for hospitality funds because it's related to visitor promotion. And I would speak in favor then of us granting them an additional seventy-five hundred dollars. If they receive all of the ten thousand dollars or close to the ten thousand dollars from the state, they should pretty much break even on the revenue they would lose from the rodeo. So, that's not as good a presentation that Mrs. Kovash could have made, but that's as much as you're going to get. Any questions or comments? Did I come close, Mr. Kessel?
You did a fine job, President Johnson.
If you agree with it, you know, then we would need a motion approving their request and that the money's come from the hospitality fund.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second?
Sir, we have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Okay, I think we're down to the Police Department and Chief Dossinger.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Commission. I do have two items before you tonight. The first one is a bid acceptance on a mobile command hostage negotiation vehicle. The Dickens Police Department received an oil impact grant to purchase a mobile command hostage negotiation vehicle. The grant received was in the amount of a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars with a ten percent match. The Dickinson Police Department received six sealed bids on the vehicle prior to the closing date of April fourteenth. Police Department staff reviewed the bids and recommended the award to Searchy Corporation in the amount of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for the base platform. Searchy was the third lowest bidder, but offered features desired by our selection committee, including a larger vehicle, better system upgrades and better adaptability to our existing hostage negotiation system that the other two bidders did not. The remainder of the funding for this project and the ten percent match is the budgeted item in the Dickens Police Department two thousand and fourteen budget.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions? I guess my question would be the, the items that you like that Searchy Corporation has, but the others didn't, were they specified items?
They were, correct.
So?
And one of the other, one of the other lower bidders actually didn't meet our, our bid specs as well.
So, what you, in effect, are telling us that the two lowest bidders didn't meet specification?
One of the lowest bidders did not meet bid specifications.
One of them didn't?
One didn't, correct.
Well, why aren't you selecting the one that did then?
Because the Searchy Corporation offered features that were more desirable by our selection committee.
But they weren't specified?
They were specified.
They were specified.
The Searchy Corporation's offers a larger vehicle for the price that the other two did not.
Searchy is exceeding specifications?
Correct.
That would be another way of saying it?
That's correct. Searchy Corporation is a, a company that specializes in vehicles designed for law enforcement.
Are there other questions?
This vehicle, Chief, will be, I assume there will be other uses other than just hostage negotiation?
Correct. It's also going to be used as our, our mobile command vehicle. Currently, what we use for our mobile command vehicle is an old FEMA trailer. That's actually a fifth-wheel trailer. And to mobilize it, we actually have to haul it with a pickup to a, to a scene for an extended period of time and it's not very efficient anymore. And we have, also have a hostage negotiation team that has the equipment to deliver a throw phone. A throw phone is a, a phone attached to a, a long wire that we can deliver to a doorstep of a residence or, or a structure. And we do that actually by robot so we don't have to put people in harm's way. That system would actually be hooked up to our hostage negotiation vehicle. You could actually get the video and audio monitored.
Could that other bidder have provided this larger vehicle had you asked for it?
I imagine it could have, correct. This, this, Searchy Corporation exceeded bid specs, I guess, on the, on the bid that they had submitted.
So, do we have a fairness thing here? You know, had they been asked for that larger vehicle?
What did they have?
Would they have given it to you and who knows at what price?
We certainly can go back and, and request to see if they'd want to resubmit a bid.
Does that make sense? Are we understanding it right?
I think if you have a bidder, a lower bidder that meets specifications, it's awfully hard to not take that bid, even if another bidder said, well, we're going to bid something that exceeds specifications. I mean, if you really wanted a greater, a higher quality specification, we should have done that.
Yeah, I think it'd be interesting to see the price difference between the two bids. That's where you'd make your better decision. If you're getting more for the same amount, that's easy to say, let's go with, with Searchy. If not, stabbing in the dark on this one.
Mr. Coling, have you reviewed this matter?
I have not. Mr. President, I was under the impression that both of the two low bids did not meet specifications. If that is not correct, then I think we probably should hold off on this item and do a review of it.
I mean, I think if you've got second thoughts on your specifications, if you want to rewrite the specifications and rebid it, you know, I, I think maybe if you think about this, your choices are to either rewrite and rebid or to accept the bid that did meet the specifications even though it's maybe not quite the same vehicle that this third bidder bid. So, unless the commission feels differently, we would just decline to take action on this and you could bring it back at a, at a later time.
We will certainly do that.
I think we want you to end up with the vehicle that, that best fits your needs, but it also has to, you know?
Correct.
If it's going through the bid process, it, you have to be very clear on specifications.
Okay, we will bring that back at a commission meeting. The second item I have is the contract terms for the simulcast radio system. The simulcast radio system project will improve the portable radio coverage for both police and fire personnel. We did receive one bid on this project through the bidding process, which was in the amount of four hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars from Tate Communications. This bid was approved at the April fourth city commission meeting. This project was also made possible by an oil impact grant, which requires a ten percent match. That match portion is, is in the two thousand and fourteen Police Department budget. I am before you today to get the terms of the agreement approved at this time to proceed with the project. Attorney Coling and PD staff have reviewed it and recommend approval.
Was the agreement attached in our, I, I couldn't find it, but then I can't rotate things either, so.
President Johnson, I, I think we inadvertently attached a portion, but not the whole agreement. But I don't think, as I review the commission packet, that you did have access to the full agreement.
Mr. Coling, can you comment on the agreement? Have you, you've gone through the contract and?
I have, Mr. President. I don't have the agreement in front of me, but it is a fairly standard agreement. There were no, no terms in the agreement. There were objectionable to, to the city, so I think we can move forward with the agreement and I know the terms are acceptable to the city.
Well, they have a pretty high level of trust in both Chief Dossinger and Attorney Coling, so I'm comfortable with, with moving forward. Anybody else? Okay. Would one of you care to move a motion to approve the contract?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Tate Communications simulcast contract.
Second?
We have the motion, the second, is there other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We'll go to Engineering and Mrs. Marshick is going to present the first two items. Item A is the east side twenty-four inch transmission line. I think this is a water line.
Correct, Mayor. This is a twenty-four inch water line in Broadway from the finished water pumping station over to the east I ninety-four business loop. That project was bid on April thirtieth. We received four bid packets and the low bid was with Western Municipal Construction of Wyoming in the amount of five million, nine hundred, ninety-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars. And it is our recommendation as staff to approve this notice of award.
Yeah, how did that amount compare to the engineer's estimate that we're carrying?
It was over by about two hundred and twelve thousand.
Okay, pretty close then.
Yep. Any questions on that one?
Any comments? It's a big project. Would there be a motion to approve the notice of award?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second?
We have the motion, the second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. You have an item B?
Item B is a task order with KLJ Engineering and actually their survey department to do data collection for us. This task order would enter us and do agreement with them to provide survey data collection for specified areas in town, which we need collected in order for HDR to move ahead with our drainage master plan that, a contract that we have with them. So, those locations would be drainage ways, manholes, different items that HDR has spelled out for us that they need to move forward with their contract. So, we recommend approval for this item with KLJ. Do you have any questions with that one?
And what amount is this?
One hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars and not to exceed contract.
Okay. All right, you've heard her introduction and her recommendation. Are there any comments or questions?
Mr. President, I'm going to abstain from the vote, but I, I'd just like to ask either Ms. Marshick or one of the other staff, what's, what is our timetable on the? What is our timetable on the H D R work being done? I understand they're probably waiting for the survey data right now.
They are waiting, and we included that information. I think it's mid-June, July that we'd have to have this data collected for them.
And then when will H D R be giving us their product?
You know, I'm not sure what the end date is on that contract at this point.
You know, we don't have to go into this anymore tonight. I just, it's really a missing link, I think, in what we've been doing the last two or three years. We've really analyzed the water system, the sewer system, and transportation. We really, it's really important that we get this done, and I hope we can move it along as fast as possible. That's my only point.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Kuvas, you look like you wanted to add a comment?
Well, I have had some conversations with H D R, and I believe their contract is scheduled through the end of the year. We had some initial discussions, though, saying that getting us recommendations for C I P-type stormwater projects at the end of the year is good, but it kind of misses our budgeting cycle. So as soon as we can get this data off to H D R, we'll do that and try and at least have some preliminary recommendations of, again, C I P-type stormwater projects for our 2015 budgeting cycle.
Well, and the other thing that may happen, you know, we were going to look at a DA tonight on a large development. There may be some of these recommended projects that we have to incorporate into a DA and bring a developer into with sharing or footing all the cost. So it's important that we get this done.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Any other comments?
Craig, you said their contract's till the end of the year. Does that mean they're going to get this done by the end of the year?
That's the intent right now. We have, you know, had some lull in activity right now, waiting on data collection. But we'll revisit that with H D R, and that's the goal, is to wrap the project up this year.
Okay, thank you.
President Johnson, we also looked at adding additional data collection to pick up some of the infrastructure that's missing in our G I S. We talked to K L J about picking up a lot of the different areas that is blank in our maps. Right now, this is just for the stormwater, but probably during budget, I'll be bringing up maybe some more data collection to update our G I S map.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zurov. Any other comments? Will there be a motion regarding this task order?
I'll make a motion to approve the data location task order. Second.
We have the motion, the second. Is there other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Then Mrs. Stuckard?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson abstains. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshick. We'll go to item C, which is reports. And Engineer Kuvas is going to have PowerPoint.
Well, it's been a couple meetings now, maybe a few meetings, since we've looked at the projects graphically, and I thought I'd give a quick update on some of the projects that we've recently bid that have started construction. I won't go through every project. If you have a particular question on any one of these or one that I don't talk about, feel free to ask between myself, Public Works Director Zurov, and Ms. Marshick. I think we can hopefully answer your question. So I'm going to go up to the podium. The mouse seems to work a little better from there. The first project I was going to talk about was the finished water pump station. And this was a project that came in front of the commission a couple meetings ago. We made a recommendation of award. The project was bid through the State Water Commission. And this is really going to be the project right out in front of the existing water treatment plant. That will be the lifeblood for all the water projects going on in the city. We're anticipating that this is going to be awarded later this month, again, at the State Water Commission level, with a 2015 anticipated completion date. So no construction started there yet. There will be a little work off-site. Some of the piping needs to go across Broadway with this finished water pump station. So we'll see some activity there, hopefully, very soon. The next project, and I'm going to jump around here a little bit, is a street project. It's the Empire Road project. The last meeting, or maybe it's been a couple meetings now, again, the commission has awarded this contract. The contracts are in place. No construction's begun yet, and this project is going to follow the existing Empire alignment. The new hospital, the St. Joseph's Hospital, is right in here. What will be unique and will be a change for the public is the alignment of Empire is going to change. It's not going to go out to the business loop anymore, but it's going to hang south and connect in with Fairway Street. So when this project gets going, this traffic that continues out to the business loop will be shut off fairly soon after construction starts. It's going to push more traffic to Fairway Street, and it's going to be busy. We're going to keep a close eye on that. I think we might end up with a four-way stop at Fairway Street to just keep that traffic manageable, because the traffic that's using Empire now is either going to go to Fairway Street or will end up on Fairway Street off of 23rd. So should be seeing some construction activity on the roadway portion on Empire Road in the next few weeks as well. Moving back to a water project, we have the, I think this is the right one, the west side 1 million gallon water tank. That's right in this square here. Again, a project that's been bid. Contracts are signed, I think, awaiting city signature right now. We've awarded that project. This is a project that shouldn't affect too many people. It'll be off the roadway, kind of tucked back in the tree rows of what will be the Pinecrest subdivision. Again, this project is anticipated for completion in 2015. While we may have substantial completion before then, we'll have a hard time filling this tank until that finished water pump station is completed. Feel free to stop me at any time. It takes me a little while to find my projects here. Next project is lift station 12. Lift station 12 was recently bid. There's an existing lift station on 15th Street, right over here by that drainage ditch. The lift station 12 project will involve upgrading that existing lift station. It will have a gravity main that follows the drainage ditch, and then it'll come on 15th. And I apologize if this alignment isn't exactly correct, but in general, it gets over to State Avenue, then follows the interstate over to where you might have seen some work earlier this year along the business loop. And it'll go into a vault there. And from there, it takes off on another project, which is the West Gravity Project. I don't believe there's been much construction on that, but that'll follow the business loop down to a project that has begun. And I'll just move on to that one, as my next project is the West Pump Station. The West Pump Station is right along Old Highway 10, near the business loop. That was one of the projects that kicked off earlier this year. They had a pretty sizable hole in the ground. But this project, while we call it the West Pump Station, is quite a bit of a force main throughout town. So a lot of the activity that you've seen on the south side of town is actually what we call the West Pump Station project. You can follow the alignment down. It follows State Avenue, crosses the river. And they've been doing quite a bit of work on Fifth Street southwest and southeast through town. And this project extends across Sixth Avenue, across the river, and over to the Influent Pump Station. It's over here. It's kind of out of sight, out of mind for many people, but this is another large project, the Influent Pump Station. That's moving along rather nicely. It's going to, I think, Mr. Zurov, correct me if I'm wrong. I think it's going to coincide the completion of this project with the completion of the wastewater reclamation facility that's south of our Lagoon Cell 4. So a lot of sewer work, some of it, some of these big projects are actually a little bit outside of the developed limits of town. So sometimes we don't see a lot of the activity going on out there. The project that Ms. Marshick just talked about earlier is the east side water distribution. It's a 24-inch water main that's going to go in Broadway for most of its alignment. Some places it follows in some railroad right-of-way. We have crossings of the railroad. We've got all those BN permits. That project was just awarded here a few minutes ago. Again, we have no contract in place. We had a pre-construction meeting. But this is another project where we anticipate much of the work to be done in '14. But the contractual completion date will be in 2015. One street project that we do have going, and I apologize, I don't have it drawn in the map, is 10th Avenue West. 10th Avenue West is the extension from 29th Street to 40th Street, right here. There has been some work ongoing. Unfortunately, they were working in this intersection here, which the map is old, but the new Prairie Rose Elementary is right here. So this intersection has been closed down. I believe that should be open tomorrow. Beyond that, most of the construction will follow what was an undeveloped road, and we hope to have limited disruptions to the traveling public. That project slated for completion in 2014. With that, that's just a brief overview of the C I P projects that we have ongoing. A lot of these are bid and just set to really get into construction full swing in the next month or so. With that, I could sure open it up to any questions you'd have about these or any other projects that we have on the map.
The 21st Street west of State's Avenue, that wouldn't be, the construction wouldn't take place this summer.
Well, we have a couple things going on 21st Street. The C I P project that we're working on, we're still working on right-of-way. And if that project does get bid this year, I don't think we would see a roadway, a newly constructed roadway on 21st Street, similar to the discussions we've had on 40th. There is some more serious pavement failures along the very east end, closer to State Avenue, that Public Works has been working diligently on. We've done quite a bit of work on the first thousand feet of that road from State Avenue West. And we actually are working with Northern Improvement to make a plan to repair that, keep it operational and functional for the next year, assuming that the State Avenue C I P project isn't constructed in 2014. We need to make sure that it remains safe and passable.
Any other comments, questions for Engineer Kuvas? All right, thank you for your updates.
Thanks.
So we'll move over to Public Works, and first item there is the 2014 chip seal project. And Public Works Director Zurov will introduce that.
Thank you, President Johnson. Commission, bids for the 2014 chip seal project were received on Monday, April 28th, and the low bidder was Aztec Corporation from St. Cloud, Minnesota, with a total bid of $2,182,393.36. This is within the engineer's estimate at 2.1 million, and city staff recommends approval for this project.
Thank you, Ms. Zurov. You've heard his introduction and recommendations. Are there any comments or questions?
Mr. President, a couple of comments. I think we should approve the bid that's submitted. It looks like a good bid. Talking to Mr. Zurov, part of this project, and this project, because I think it's three years' worth of seal coating, is going to encompass about half the city. It's going to really affect a good portion of the city. Part of the project, which is pretty standard, is that there will be a lot of patching done prior to application of the chip seal. I know that with the short staff we have in all departments and the opportunity we have during this contract, probably a pretty good bid with the patching, that I really hope that Mr. Zurov has some flexibility to maximize the amount of patching that we do throughout the community as we're doing this. And if it takes, if we can find a little more money to do that, I think this is the right time to really maximize that. So hoping that you guys can talk about that as you move forward. The second thing I want to say is, for the public, whenever this chip seal is done, this will probably be the, when coupled with all the other projects we have going on in town, is probably going to be the biggest impact to the traveling public. When you couple it with all the underground work, the other street projects that are going to be done, the time period, it'll be a few weeks, I expect, because it's a good-sized project. That will be the toughest time in Dickinson to get around, and be good improvements. But again, we just need to keep reminding the public and asking for patience.
Mr. Jackson, we did, I didn't want to get in the middle of Rough Rider days, so that is not, they're going to be shut down during those days.
Good. But I'll move to approve the bid award to Aztec.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Are there other comments? Not, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckard?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. You have some reports you'd like to make?
First, I think it's more permission than a report on the 21st Street west of State that you just mentioned, President Johnson. My understanding, it'd be approximately a year before that road is finished and that we would have to continue having traffic along 21st Street from State Avenue to the interim bypass. We've been out there patching and trying to put material that will hold in the street. We had Northern Improvement look at it to see what we could do in the interim. And I think the quote is enclosed, being it's an emergency repair and it's over the $20,000 mark. I guess I'm requesting permission to have it as an emergency and not bid it and be able to continue with the improvements and dealing with Northwest, or Northern Improvement along with 21st. We have the intersection by the new Prairie Rose School that is, has collapsed and is, I think it's done collapsing now. I'd like to get that repaired also. I don't have the staff to do that big a project, and I would like to have, be able to have Northern repair that also.
Okay, you've heard his request. Any comments or questions?
Do you have an idea of cost associated with?
The 21st Street is enclosed. I think the cost on that was estimated $119,000. That includes reclaiming in place and subgrade prep of six to 12 inches for the, I think it's about 3,000 feet of three? Couple thousand, or 1,000 feet. I guess it's to the top of the hill into the, where the city limits ends. Reclaim some of that in place, subgrade prep, and a two-inch lift of paving to try to get us through the year.
How about on the Prairie Rose?
I don't have a price on the Prairie Rose yet. We're still working on that.
Mr. President, in particular, what we would be asking is the board would declare an emergency situation, which would allow Mr. Zurov... an emergency situation, which would allow Mr. Zurov to contract for those services in excess of the limitation.
Thank you, Mr. Coling.
One of the issues on 21st, of course, is truck traffic, we have no trucks signed, but there's still trucks going through there, I'm hoping if we can get a lift on there that we really do what we can to keep trucks off of that. We had some no trucks signs on there, I believe, two or three trucks drove them over, drove right over them, so that's the kind of traffic we get on 21st.
Well, until the bypass is completed all the way out to 22, it's gonna be a tough, tough thing to enforce, I think, on a voluntary basis, I think you'd almost have to have Chief Dossinger station a patrol car out there.
And one of the things I think 21st needs this, you know, we're gonna work on Empire Road, the bypass isn't done, and, I mean, there's gonna be limited ways to get to the west, and I think unless we do this, I don't know what else to do but close the road.
You know, the obvious concern, at least for me, is that we're gonna do this, and then only a few months later build a new road, and if that's what has to happen, so be it, but I think your right-of-way issue on 21st is further west. Is there any way that this can be done to plan, to design, and minimize the, you guys know what I'm getting at?
Yeah, there is, there's no sewer on 21st, but there is water.
You've got underground to put in?
Yeah, there'll be underground extension up that road.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Jackson, if I may, we do have a right-of-way issue right on the corner, on the north side of 21st, northwest corner of that, until you get into the Clear Creek and that subdivision, there's some right-of-way that we have to acquire there.
Okay, sounds like you have to proceed.
Well, would there be a motion declaring that this is, what's term you use, Ms. Coling?
Mr. President, it's an emergency situation.
Emergency situation.
I'll make the motion.
There, we have the motion, is there a second? We have the motion, the second, further discussion. Hearing none, then we'll vote, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Altman, Mrs. Stuckert, Mr. Steiner, Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you, President Johnson, the last thing I have is, enclosed, you'll find the fleet policy for review and comments, this policy's part of establishing a city fleet and vehicle management system. In a couple of months, we'll have our new public works facility open, and our new fuel system operational, we're looking at trying to have a fleet management system or a fleet software, too, we're looking at different options with regard to that, but the fleet policy would be the beginning of centralizing all vehicles under one, in one department, so I guess I'm open for comments or suggestions with the fleet policy, City Attorney Coling has reviewed it, and I guess for your review.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zurov, it was in our board book this evening, any comments, questions regarding it, you'd like to make?
You know, I don't have specific comments, the only thing I noticed is, I think it's good, it's complete and all, it's a lot of narrative, and maybe for the use of staff, it might be, as I read through it, I could visualize some kind of a checklist, something brief that would refer to the policy itself, and might make it more usable.
Yeah, we have numerous, maybe forms and things we need to come up with, I guess I want to input from Commission and different departments in the city, it's kind of putting all vehicles under one umbrella to help with maybe writing bid specs, purchasing, and things like that, that most, some departments aren't used to doing, so.
Well, I think in general, it's a good idea, you know, the city has become, has become a much larger business organization than what it once was, where we, some of these things we probably operated a little more informally, now it's time to be more formal, and I think that's what you're doing here, and with the introduction of the public works building, a much larger facility does allow you to centralize things and have central control, so I think you're on the right track.
Okay, thank you.
But I think Mr. Jackson has a good point, there's a lot of pages here, and for it to be usable, you may need some form of executive summary or checklist, as he mentioned.
I just want to clarify one small point, it won't encompass all city vehicles, the fire department, specialty vehicles, things such as that will not be included, we'll still rely upon their specialty, some specialty police vehicles as well wouldn't be included, it's more typical vehicles that you would see in each of the department.
Outside of public safety, is really what you're saying.
Correct.
Anything else? That was, you're just asking for our reaction and our input?
Yes, and I guess we wanted to bring it forward, reaction input, I guess with the new facility, too, I guess it'll be determined exactly what vehicles are maintained and serviced out there, preventative maintenance on the vehicles, and I guess it's a work in progress, too, is what I wanted to show.
Did you have any project updates, or did Mr.?
Nope, Mr. Kubas did them all, and it's all for me.
All right, any questions for Mr. Zurov? Okay, Mr. Kretan, we'll move to community development, and we'll let you introduce your own items here.
Mr. President, Commissioners, the first item we have tonight is a Prairie Creek rezoning petition, this is a rezoning petition from single-family residential to medium-density, high-density residential and community commercial for the Prairie Creek subdivision, which is located in the southeast corner of State Avenue and 21st Street West, this is the second reading for the ordinance, city staff and the planning commission recommend approval, there is no change from the first reading, Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Kretan, at this time, anyone from the public who would like to comment regarding ordinance number 1549 may do so now, you just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment? Okay, there's no one from the public that would comment on 1549, any comments or questions by city commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve second reading and final passage of ordinance 1549.
Second.
We have the motion, the second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote, Mrs. Stuckert, Mr. Steiner, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Altman, Chair votes aye, motion carries.
The next item is an amendment to the future land use map, the Dickinson Company, it's a plan from mixed-use to commercial for the property located at the southwestern corner of 33rd Street Southwest and Highway 22, it is approximately 39 acres, the planning commission and city staff recommend approval, there is no change from the first reading, Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Kretan, at this time, we'll ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding ordinance 1550, if so, you may do so now, come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Anyone wish to comment on 1550? There's no public comments on 1550, so any comments by commissioners or questions? Is there a motion regarding this item?
Move to approve second reading and final passage, ordinance 1550.
Second.
We have the motion, the second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote, Mr. Steiner, Mrs. Stuckert, Mr. Altman, Mr. Jackson, Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Next item, Mr. President, it's an amendment to the future land use map of the Dickinson Company, it's a plan from residential to commercial, the property is located at 2200 State Avenue, it is approximately 5.83 acres, the planning commission and city staff recommend approval, there's no change from the first reading, Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Kretan, again, if there's someone from the public that would like to comment on ordinance number 1551, you may do so now, just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anybody from the public? Is no one from the public that wishes to comment, any comments or questions by commissioners? Not, is there a motion regarding ordinance 1551?
Motion to approve, second reading, final passage.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote, Mr. Altman, Mrs. Stuckert, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Steiner, Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is a task order for the approval of staff recommended firm KLJ to develop the West Dickinson area plan, if you recall, in March, city staff sent out a request for a proposal for qualified firms to submit proposals for the West Dickinson area plan, we received three proposals, KLJ was definitely the best by far, their plan is not to exceed $119,000, the plan includes population, land use, transportation, capital facilities, infrastructure and utilities, community facilities, and an annexation plan as part of that, city staff recommends approval of the task order, I do have in the audience, Karen Day is the project manager from KLJ, if you do have any specific questions, either her or I can answer those tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kretan, any comments or questions for Mr. Kretan? I just say I read through the proposal, it's very complete, very well done, so.
We're very happy with it, we're looking forward to moving forward with the project.
Any other comments? Is there a motion regarding this task order?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have the motion and the second to approve the task order to KLJ, any other discussion?
I'll be abstaining, Mr. Chairman.
There's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote, Mr. Steiner, Mrs. Stuckert, Mr. Altman, Mr. Jackson abstains, Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Last item under community development, sign regulations, and I will allow Attorney Coling to present that.
Mr. President and Commissioners, you have before you in your packets ordinance 1540, which is an amendment to the Dickinson Sign Code, Article 39.10 of our code, the changes that are made in this document, it's an overall revision of the entire code, but it's, most of the changes are principally going to pertain to billboards or outdoor advertising signs. Upon adoption of this code, billboards or outdoor advertising signs would be allowed within the city limits and within the ETZ, but they would be limited to commercial zoning districts and industrial zoning districts, and limited to the principal arterial roads that are designated in our comprehensive plan. Those roads are identified as Interstate 94, Valard Street from State Avenue to 10th Avenue East, the East and West Business Loops, and Highway 22. This ordinance would also provide that billboards are not permitted and cannot be constructed within the Renaissance Zone of the city. There are also permitting requirements that are included in this ordinance, a applicant for a sign would be required to provide the city with evidence of the consent of the landowner to the placement of that sign, they would also provide us with engineering certification with respect to the structural integrity of the sign, as well as soil testing to show that the sign will hold up in the soil that it's placed, the applicant would also provide the city with a survey verifying that the sign will not encroach upon the public right-of-ways, public rights of way, rather, and provide us with data location to make sure that the sign comports with the spacing requirements that are contained within the code. The spacing requirements in this code state that a static billboard, traditional billboard, cannot be located any closer than 500 feet from another static billboard. This ordinance also contains a spacing requirement with respect to digital billboards, and that spacing requirement is 1,500 feet. The ordinance also requires that a billboard cannot be placed within 300 feet of a school, park, religious institution, or any residential zoning district. There is a provision in the code to allow you as a board to vary that 300-foot spacing requirement, if there is some reason to do so, that would be through our ordinary special use permit procedure. If someone wanted to reduce the distance less than 300 feet, they would apply for a special use permit, and you'd have a chance to weigh in on that. This ordinance also limits the size of billboards, the maximum size is 672 square feet, limits the height of billboards to 40 feet, or for those signs that are located in, or oriented toward the interstate, the height limitation is 50 feet. We also have provisions in this ordinance that pertain to the lighting or the illumination of our billboards, specifically with respect to digital billboards, it requires that there be an automatic mechanism for dimming the billboards, so that they don't shine too brightly at night or create distractions, there is a particular rubric that is used for measuring illumination, and that requirement is included within this ordinance, to make sure that the automatic dimming technology is included. I'd be happy to entertain any questions with respect to the ordinance, we have distributed this ordinance to members of the sign industry, both for outdoor advertising billboard signs and the, what we call on-premise signs, or ordinary business advertising on their site, and we have tried to work with those companies and incorporate some of the restrictions into this ordinance that we think will be acceptable to the sign industry, as well as acceptable to us as a community to protect our citizens and our, the visual quality of Dickinson, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those.
Any questions at this point? Not, we'll open it up to the public, anyone that wishes to comment on this ordinance, number 1540, may do so now, just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments.
Thank you, my name's Holly Martenson, I own Dakota So-and-so, and I entered into a lease with Dakota Outdoor, it's a 20-year lease for $5,000 a year, I am sorry that I did that, it was brought to my attention on Friday how monstrous this sign is gonna be, I went north of town to see the sign that is actually smaller than the one proposed in front of my store, and I, I had no idea they were so huge. Also, I didn't realize that it would affect my property value and my neighbor's property values, $5,000 a year is not enough to devastate my neighbors on their property values, and I'd like to encourage you guys to please consider the sign size in the ordinance. For me to actually see a sign that big really puts it in perspective, unless you go and see one that big, it is very hard to imagine how enormous these are, so I just would like to give, you know, please consider how large these are. Also, when you look at that sign, it flashes, it flashes, so you don't glance at the sign and go, oh yeah, there's the sign for the, you know, restaurant, or there's the sign for the motel, you watch the sign, because it's changing, you don't glance at it, you're driving on Highway 22, I myself had a major collision at the Walmart intersection, was following a semi, you don't glance at these signs, you watch these signs, I'd encourage you all to go and see that sign before you make any further judgments on these ordinances, because traffic is definitely already a problem, so I'm sorry I signed that lease, and I guess that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name's Rocky Platon, and I own the property adjoining Holly. Hi. My name's Rocky Platon, and I own the property adjoining Holly. I kind of heard about what was going on with the signs, but I never in my wildest dreams thought it was going to affect me. Just because if something's going to happen close to me, I would be notified. You know, a sign this big with no special use permit. One business decides to do something, but the business beside it can't do anything about it. Oh, you know, I look at the size of the sign that they want to put up. Now, I know everybody's kind of concentrating on what's happening on the west side of town, but on our property, Frontage Road, Highway 22, it's prime commercial property. You drive by there and you look at our buildings, you don't see that as such, but it's the property that is worth the money, not the old buildings that are on there. My wife and I have been in that building over 20 years, you know. I guess my worry is, you know, we've been approached a couple times by people wanting to buy our property. It's never been enough to, okay, stop an income to whatever. It may or may not happen. I don't know, but you got a sign that big, shining all the time in town. Think about it. If you wanted to put a two- or three-story building, say like a hotel business like KLJ, even if you illuminate that thing, if you dim it, you're still going to get that flashing in and out. You know, I can come up with all sorts of reasons not to do it. The traffic out there, people looking, you know, we're dealing with traffic all the time, but I guess assign that big and not having a special use permit, you know, that's a really a hard one to understand because you restrict, you have nothing, no compromise, no nothing. And, you know, the only way I found out about it was last Friday the 16th, I was actually going by my wife's shop. She's out of town on business, and I saw Braun, the testing company, digging a test. Well, what the heck? I'm going to go see what they're doing. So they, the one that mentioned it to me. And so that is why I'm late here. You know, I apologize, you know. I missed it on the newspaper and on the TV, but I guess what bothers me, too, is right before we came, about 3:30, I went and talked to Holly, and KLJ surveyors were there already surveying for the sign. So it's like it's approved already, you know. I just hope that you would really think about what you guys are wanting to do here that is going to compromise other people's businesses. I really do. That's a big sign. Those are signs that are made, in my opinion, out on the highway where you're driving 55, 75 miles an hour, where you can watch it. You know, you come through town, at least three different time periods during the day, you know. Who would ever thought Dickinson would have four-lane traffic backed up? But we do. You watch that sign. You know, I'm just, before you vote, I really hope you really think about what these signs may do. You know, if this sign is up and it restricts my sale volume, I know there's been people talking about, well, I need a billboard. It's income for me, whatever. The little bit that they might make compared to what I might lose when I hopefully someday can retire, that's what's bothering me. So I just hope that you really think about this before you guys vote on it.
We have thought about it. I mean, we appreciate your comments. The ordinance, the first reading was passed in January. Since January, they have been working diligently on this. I mean, it isn't that it hasn't been thought of, and prior to it being...
Oh, I...
Just a minute.
Okay.
I didn't interrupt you.
I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine. But prior to January, I mean, it was an issue then, too. I mean, the, it isn't like we don't have a sign ordinance. We do have a sign ordinance. If we defeat this tonight, if we defeat second reading, there is a sign ordinance. What you have then is the old one. Am I correct? What you have is the old one. What we've been working towards is actually making it a much more restrictive ordinance. I mean, if you're encouraging us to defeat this, then it's going to be more liberal than what this ordinance, this new one, would be. And I'm just, I want to make sure you understand that, that it isn't this ordinance that's allowing that sign.
I understand. If you can't, you know, if I can say this right, at least make it, the size of this sign, from my understanding, is 30 feet off the ground, 48 foot wide, and 18 feet tall. My building is 50 feet wide by 100 feet long. That sign is actually bigger than the front of our building. So, you know, if at least restrict the signs so it's not so overwhelming, is all I'm asking then.
Yeah. The ordinance does restrict sign size. It may be larger than what you agree with, but, Mr. Coling, maybe you can review that again?
Mr. President, the size limitation is 672 square feet, which we've come to understand is somewhat of a standard practice within the industry. That is a sign that is 48 by 14, 48 feet by 14 feet.
Okay. So that's the largest sign allowed in this ordinance?
That's correct.
48 by 14. Okay.
Can I ask you this? Then, if they have to fill out a permit for them the size of the sign that they want to use, is that, is that correct?
I'm sorry. Can you repeat the question?
Then they have to fill out a permit for the sign, size of sign they want to put up? Is that what happens?
Yes, there is a permitting rubric within the ordinance of information that the sign company would need to supply the city. We would review that information, and then if it comports with the ordinance, then we would be able to issue that sign permit.
But it can be smaller?
It can be smaller, yes.
Now, would that be within the city and their permit, or the owner of the property and the signing company?
The size of the sign, we limit the maximum size of it, and there is a reference in here to a minimum size of a off-premise sign, and Mr. Cottan might know that better than I do. I believe it's 300-some square feet is the minimum, but as long as the sign fell within those limitations, then it would be permissible under the ordinance.
So the owner of the property would have no say then?
Well, the owner of the property has to provide consent to the sign in order for the sign permit to be granted. So as long as the owner of the property, yeah, they can negotiate with the sign company as much as they wish.
Okay. I guess I would just reiterate what the mayor said. You know, the ordinance that we have before us in second reading, a lot of thought and development and keeping public interest in mind. Here's what's happened, which has prompted you to come here today, is, you know, a contract's been signed on a sign, core samples have been taken, and both of those steps are premature because that sign has not been approved, whether this ordinance was approved or not. So there's been some jumping of the gun of taking the core samples, signing a five-year contract to lease space to have a sign. That sign has not been approved by city staff or the commission. And so a couple of things have come together to prompt you to be here today.
Right.
And so I would encourage you to encourage us to actually pass the second reading of this ordinance so that we have the teeth, so that we have the limitations, because if we go back to what we had before, then you're certainly not going to be happy with how the signage moves forward.
You know, I wish I really could, you know. Like I said, I was kind of blindsided with this.
Sure.
And it's like, I've been kind of running all day to figure out what to do. I've talked with lots of the city guys, and, you know, I was just, where do I stop? You know, I know you guys, Mr. Stuckard, make the ultimate decision. I just hope that whatever you guys do isn't detrimental to my property.
Right.
I really do, because that's all I got. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
You bet. Thank you.
Mr. President, I can just make one comment. The permitting requirements as far as surveys and soil test samples and those sorts of things, that is information that, under this ordinance, we would request the sign applicant to come into with its application. When they submit the application, we want to have the survey, the soil samples, the construction plans, all of that together so that we can take one look at it, the city staff, and say, yes, this meets our sign code, or no, it doesn't, rather than permit a sign and then ask them to go out and supply those and find those supporting materials. So I think, I think this particular sign that they were doing, the test pouring on, is a Dakota Outdoor Advertising sign. I think they're doing the right thing, anticipating that this sign code is going to be approved, and getting that information together so that they can submit at an appropriate time and complete their application.
They won't erect a sign until the city has reviewed their application and granted it.
Correct. Correct.
The only time the city commission would be involved is if there's something that doesn't comply with the ordinance, but I would suspect that city staff might say, I think this exception makes sense, and then you would ask for a special use permit.
Correct.
So I have a question, Mr. Coling. Can she, does she have recourse? I mean, isn't it, don't they have to agree to the signs?
Yes. The landowner has absolute discretion as to whether or not they want to grant the sign company the right to put up a sign on their property. If an individual property owner gets approached by a sign company to put up a sign, and the landowner doesn't want to do that, and they say no, then that's the end of the issue. Any property owner has the absolute right to prohibit a sign on their property.
So if she's already signed a contract, and once we pass this, can she go back?
That's going to be an issue that I think the private parties are going to have to determine. I haven't seen that contract or that lease. I think that's something that those two are going to have to work out.
But they would still have to, it would still have to go through our planning, right? The planning and zoning to get approved?
Through our...
It wouldn't go through planning and zoning. It would go through city staff.
Okay. Through the permit.
Okay. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment? Just come to the podium and state your name.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mike Derby with Dakota Outdoor Advertising. Just want to follow up. We've, a little surprised I'd maybe, we've tried to keep in constant contact with Holly as far as how we're moving forward, and so I'm a little surprised I, you know, I would have hoped you'd given me a call before tonight, but I understand. But I would like to say I will meet with Holly afterwards. We do have a lease in place. And just so you do know, that, two things. And I think Leo Ness is here from Newman. There's really no proof or evidence that a billboard on a piece of property devalues the property next door. Okay? As a matter of fact, a billboard on a piece of property enhances the value of the billboard, of the property the billboard's on. Any of us that are in the real estate business understand, you know...
I would disagree. Don't speak for me.
All right. Exception granted. Most realtors understand that this generates additional cash flow, which goes towards cap rates, which increases the value of the property. And so I just want to clarify that, you know, I'll talk with Holly about the situation, but we have a, you know, she's driving revenue from this, and our family's been in the business since 1965, and we've never seen any evidence of the properties next door being devalued by a billboard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Is there anybody else who wishes to comment on this ordinance?
Mayor, before he starts, I do have to go to my other commitment, and I will just leave you all with, I would consider approval and passage of the second reading of this ordinance, so I will leave you with that.
Thank you, Mr. Olman. Clerk will note that Mr. Olman has left the meeting at, I guess, whatever time that clock says it is. Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, President Johnson, and commission members and staff. I'm Leo Ness with Newman Signs out of Jamestown. First of all, the ordinance you have before you is in a work in progress, and I want to personally thank Matt and staff, and Ed and staff for their inviting us to the table and allowing us the opportunity to be part of the process of developing a good sign code. This is, knowing all the city sign codes in the state, the most restrictive code by spacing that there exists in the, in state North Book, which is fine. We've been able to look at drafts that they would give us, and they've taken our comments, considerations, and enacted on those, so we're very appreciative of being able to do that. It's a 23-page document, and I only really have one item that I'd like to point out and question, and that would be on page 18, number 2, under permitting, Section A. It's the portion of this code that deals with the soil testing. This is, I've never in, I've been in this business 34 years, and I've never, it's never been a requirement that, the type of footing that we build or that we make for a billboard is a little different than a, you know, big pylon sign that's 100 feet tall or whatnot. And it's never been a priority or recommended or prior, you know, to get a permit. So I didn't know anything about them, and I made some phone calls. I called KLJ. I called Geotech because I didn't really know what soil tests were, how they work. I'm glad you're here, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Krupas, you can maybe tell me, but, so I just wanted to find out what was involved in it, how long they take, how much they cost, you know, because it's a new, it would be a new thing for us as far as obtaining a permit. And a couple of questions they had was, well, what kind of soil test? And I said, I really don't know. I don't know anything about them. So there's different levels, or different things, or boring, or what's required. It doesn't really say. If that could be omitted, great. It could be clarified that, you know, to whatever, so I can understand it. The other thing I found out was it's about a six-week lead time. The engineering business is really good out here, and so it takes you a couple months just to get it done. The final point I want to make is it's kind of a chicken or an egg deal, based on what I was told, the costs, where it could, and that's fine. I mean, the costs are what they are. If it's a requirement and needs to be done, then that's what you have to do. But I would, or maybe it's conditional. I don't know, as far as the soil test, because it's such a new thing for us, anyway, but to, you know, it could add 10% to the cost of putting the sign up. And to do that prior to being issued a permit, you're kind of a, you know, that's the chicken and the egg question, is it? You don't want to spend the money if you're going to be denied. And, but other than that, it's a workable code. I appreciate the ability to put our two cents in, and that's the only item that I have that I would like to omit or understand better, however that may be done, Ed. But we're very thankful and appreciative, so thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Ness. Anybody here, either Mr. Coling, or Mr. Cottan, Mr. ... Does anybody here, either Mr. Cohen or Mr. Kurtan, Mr. Kubis, care to comment regarding the issue of soil testing?
I can, Mr. President. The reason that we're requiring that is, it's pretty typical that you have on a lot of projects, you, an engineer that's going to certify the foundation is sufficient work, would, I would hope, would, with the varying soil types that we do have, require that in order to build the foundation right. Places that I have lived, we've required that. It's pretty standard in order to do that. With respect to, would the permit be denied? This would be part of the application that you would go through. And unless they are applying for a reduction in spacing, which requires a special use permit, the other stuff, you go, it's a ministerial permit. As long as you could prove your spacing, that there's not another one for that, you go through the criteria, you'll be granted that. So I don't see that it's, that you would need to do this test prior to, prior to any other permits, unless it was a special use permit where you wanted to go from 300 feet next to a school to 200. You would wait until after the special use permit is either granted, if it is granted, and then you'd go through the building permit stage. So this is a cost, absolutely, but it's a life safety issue that I look at as well. And that was the, that's the essential reason that we put it in there.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtan. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment regarding this ordinance? All right, we'll declare the public hearing part closed. Comments now and questions by city commissioners or other city staff.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Cohen did a good job summarizing what's been happening here since January. The process has been, I don't know if I should say intense, certainly been detailed. I don't know how many, how many planning and zoning meetings we've discussed this, has to be half dozen for sure. And the industry has been, I think, at all those meetings. I feel for Mr. Cohen and Mr. Kurtan a little bit, because we sent this back to planning and zoning in January so we could develop more consensus. And I think that was a struggle. It was a struggle, because there were a lot of different opinions at planning and zoning. But I think there was, there was agreement that we need place for billboards in our community. And I think there was an agreement that it was appropriate that we manage the number of those billboards. We heard during the process that Fargo actually caps the number of billboards, and we discussed that. We discussed very seriously the possibility of limiting billboards to the present number in the community, and decided against that. The spacing conversation took a long time, and we discussed a lot of things with the spacing consideration. That's the one thing that I still remain a bit uncomfortable with. And I would still like to see a change made on page 16. If you look on page 16 of the draft, items 2 and 3, to increase the spacing to 1,000 feet on static billboards. Now, we need to handle, you know, I don't think we want to go into a new ordinance with non-conforming billboards. So I think billboards that have been here, however we word that, we should be able to go in and retrofit those billboards, make them a modern design, a modern billboard, however we would word that. That means we'd have to change item 3 also. The 500 feet would change to either 1,000 or 1,500, I guess, whatever we prefer. But I feel pretty strongly that we need to space it out a little bit further.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Any other comments?
I'd just like to make one comment, Mayor Johnson. It's, I think the sign, I'm not against signs, but I think the sign companies that are providing the contracts and meeting with the public need to probably walk out and do a better job of telling them the size of their signs. I mean, I'm pretty good with the tape measure, but some people aren't. And they don't have a vision of what this sign is going to be like. And I disagree with the property values, because a 20-year contract is a long time. If you sell your property and someone else wants to build something else there, you still have the sign in front of you for 20 years. So I think they need to do a better job of selling their product to the person that's got, that owns the property and is going to have to deal with that sign. $500 or $600, is it? A month might sound, you know, kind of appetizing, but it really isn't over 20 years.
Thank you, Mr. DuCort. Mr. Cohen or Mr. Kurtan, any response to Mr. Jackson's comments on the distance issue?
Mr. President, if you do entertain the idea with respect to 1,000 foot, and I have no objection to that, I would, for consistency, apply it for number 2 and 3. We don't want to have one that's 500 and one's 1,000 for that. If we're going to apply it for static, I think it should be applied for both.
Was this an issue that you guys discussed in planning and zoning quite extensively? And could you tell us how you got to the number you did get to?
It was a, it was probably two-thirds of the conversation that we had at least last meeting. Our last meeting probably lasted, I don't know, two and a half hours, maybe two hours or something. It seemed like it lasted a long time. There was a lot of debate going back and forth. Spacing was probably the biggest issue with respect to it. We had a split planning commission. Some were in favor of standard ones that conformed to the North Dakota standards. That's where the 500-foot comes into play. Others wanted 1,000 or even, or even greater. And ultimately, this came to a point in which we just said, okay, we'll let the commission know that there was not a consensus from the planning commission with respect to the spacing, with the spacing requirements and even, even other parts of the amendment, and just bring it back to you with respect to what we have gotten direction from you, and provide an ordinance that, that was somewhat consistent with other jurisdictions. Our ordinance, I would agree, is the most restrictive in the state, and I think that's a good thing for us. That being said, there was a lot of discussion going back and forth from 500 to 1,000 feet. So there was no consensus with respect to the planning commission on that. And I think Mr. Cohen could agree to that.
Mr. President, commissioners, I think Mr. Kurtan is corrected. There wasn't really a consensus among planning and zoning as to what those distances should be. I think, if I remember correctly, we went into the planning and zoning meeting, and our distances were 500 feet for static billboards and 1,200 feet for digital billboards. We did do a survey of other sign ordinances around the state for the other principal cities around the state. And the distances of 500 and 1,200 seem to be fairly standard. I don't recall distances in any of the other sign codes that were more than that, more than 500 for a static or 1,200 for a digital. The North Dakota Department of Transportation also has regulations that issues with respect to minimum spacing. And the DOT regulation states 500 feet on interstate highway and a spacing distance of 300 feet on any other state highway road. So I think, you know, the number that you pick is kind of a matter of personal preference. I think we're probably on these numbers within the ballpark of what other cities and what the state requires.
We also speculated about the DOT regulation of 500 feet probably happening with a view of rural highway, rural property. Don't know that for a fact, but guessing. You know, at 500 feet, just using this as an example, you've got our new commercial development and the Roars property along I-94. And theoretically, you could have 10 billboards in a mile, in that mile that Roars is developing. No. That means that property owners would have to grant leases, et cetera, et cetera. But...
When you put it that way, it doesn't sound like a lot.
It's not likely to happen that you'd have 10, but our ordinance would allow it.
No, excuse me. We'll let you talk, but you've got to come up to the mic. Otherwise, you don't get recorded, okay?
Commissioner Jackson's right. If you had 5,000 feet, you could put 10 signs in there. However, that's on the exit, is it 59? Is that, that one is outside?
That's, mhm.
And if that's outside the city limits, which I think it corporate city limits at this time? Is that right?
No, it'd be within city limits.
Okay, how about the new exit west of there?
That's outside the city limits.
Okay, the only way, that spacing would apply, but if you're in or out, the federal guidelines are, they change a little bit whether you're in or out. And I guess I couldn't tell on the map there where that was.
What are the federal guidelines?
Well, if you're, if the new exit, whatever, the one out there where they're building that, you have to be 500, if you're outside the corporate city limits, you have to be 500 feet from the point of widening of that ramp, whether it be the off-ramp or on-ramp.
Okay.
Typically, those are 1,800, 1,900 feet from the time that you're going to exit off to where it starts to widen. That's the point of widening. You have to be 500 feet from that point. So that puts you 2,300, 2,400 feet, or almost a half mile from the actual exit or the ramp. That's on the, so if it was all in the city, right, but usually you don't have that issue on the...
But if the exits are inside the city limits, do federal sta...
Ramp law does not apply.
Do federal standards apply then?
The federal standards of 500-foot spacing apply, but the ramp law does, you know, the spacing from the ramp law does not apply inside corporate limits.
So if it's inside the city limits, then...
You can put them next to the ramps. If it's outside, you're almost a half mile away.
Okay, well...
It changes, but I didn't, I couldn't remember whether that was in or out over there.
No, our three exits right now are pretty much inside the city limits. We have three interstate exits.
Right. The west one, north, the west one, the west one.
Middle and the east, yeah. And especially on the west, we're going to the west. So if that one's on the edge, it won't be on the edge for very long.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. President, one other permitting requirement that I did pass over is, this ordinance would require that the sign applicant obtain a North Dakota DOT permit for that sign, if it is required. And all of these principal arterial roads, Highway 22, the Business Loops, the Lard Street, and I-94 are NDOT roads. So they would require a Department of Transportation permit as well.
So they have to get that permit before we can even consider...
Yeah, you, any sign, this is similar to Minot. Minot rewrote their code in the last year and a half, and they basically limit everything to the highway system. Meaning that if you put a billboard up in Minot, you're not going to do it without a city permit or a DOT permit. And the same is true, the way this, with the designation of roads, that's the way it is here now.
Okay, thank you. Well, Mr. Jackson, it's awfully hard for the rest of us to vote against you on issues like this.
I don't know why.
Well, usually because you're more knowledgeable than the rest of us on this.
And, you know, to me, this is an aesthetic thing. There's no science here, I don't think. It's an aesthetic thing, and I don't think any of us are saying that we shouldn't have a place for billboards. I think it's just a judgment call of how we think the gateways to our city should look. That's all this is. So it really is a judgment call.
Well, the thing I'm struggling with is, you know, it was really planning and zoning and our city staff that works with planning and zoning, which you're part of, that planning and zoning community, really struggled with this. And like, three of us haven't had that same struggle. So I mean, just, I'm a little, it's a little hard to say, okay, they got the, the distance number wrong here, and we'll correct that.
I hear you.
I mean, we haven't been part of that entire debate, and...
You know, I'd ask Mr. Cohen and Mr. Kurtan to please disagree with me, but I think with the number I've suggested, there would be three or four planning and zoning members who would be very comfortable with that. There would be two who would not be at risk of speaking for others.
Mr. Kurtan, you shook your head kind of both ways, I think, which...
No, I would concur with that. I think that, based upon our last meeting that we had, I think we had five, five planning commissioners. And I would say three to probably be in favor of that. Pure speculation, three would be in favor of that, and two would be fine with the 500.
So I think I've got, I think I have the right page up here. And so where I see 500, you would make it 1,000? In two and three?
I think, and Mr. Kurtan or Mr. Cohen, correct me, but I think the change would be, in items 2 and 3, you would change the two 500-foot distances to 1,000. But then I think we probably need some language for existing billboards?
Mr. President, I think we would. There are billboards within the community that are spaced 500 feet apart. I'm thinking particularly, I think, most of the billboards on the east side of exit 64, or exit 64, and the billboards that are on the west side of exit 59 are all 500 feet apart. So unless we crafted some language that deemed those to be conforming, legal non-conforming signs, they would become non-conforming at the implementation of this ordinance. I think we can do that, if that's the direction the commission wishes to go, to have those existing signs be deemed legal conforming signs and implement a 1,000-foot spacing requirement from here on out.
You need a little time to review it and draft the language, I assume.
I think so. You know, the limitation here, if you wanted to move those numbers from a 500 linear feet to 1,000 feet, we can do that, and you can pass the ordinance as amended. And if, we can probably include in that motion some conditional language on deeming the existing signs to be legal conforming signs, and pass the ordinance, and we will get the language right as pursuant to your motion, if you wish to move it forward now.
What do you think, Mr. Jackson?
Well, I think that's what should be done. But you guys need to be comfortable with it, too.
I'm going to defer to your recommendation and Mr. Kurtan's recommendation of 1,000 feet. I think one thing people here in western North Dakota and the city of Dickinson like to see the open spaces. If that means an additional 500 feet, I think we're erring on the side of being more comfortable for the people than more populated with or something. Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Mr. DuCort shook her head, yes. Mr. Cohen, do you need a few minutes to give us a recommended motion on how to do this? If you want to take a few minutes, I'll see if there's comments from the general public on any other matter. Okay? So at this point... So, at this point, if there's any other public issues that someone is here to speak to, you may do so now. Doesn't have to be the sign, anything. You just come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments.
Mr. President, I just had, this is, this is on premise. This is the easy part. This is the remainder of the ordinance. There is, I talked to Matt today. I neglected on removing a portion, and I just want to clarify that, and it's an easy, easy fix to do so. Under on-premise signs, we talk about maximum sign area, and we refer to that maximum amount. And then the next, the running sentence with that says that neither side could be half of that size. Doesn't make a lot of sense, we, because we had kind of looked at that from another ordinance. I would like to remove that, and the reason for that is for clarity, and it kind of changes the, the outcome of the ordinance, and I'll kind of explain to you. Normally, when you do a sign ordinance, you talk about the maximum square feet is for both sides. You don't say there's 200 square feet, and you could only have 100 here and 100 here. You normally don't do that. So, I want to remove that language. It's in a couple of parts of that. I can't imagine anybody in the sign industry having an issue with that because that allowed, that clarifies it, and makes it easier for the public and the rest to do so. So, I just want to have that amendment added to that. Matt's familiar. Mr. Coling's aware of that particular issue. I could refer to the specific pages that talk about it, but it makes sense. It's a clarity issue. Has very little impact, and it meets the intent of what I was trying to say.
Okay. So, Mr. Coling, why don't you go ahead and work that into while you're working on it? Mr. Sealock, you had some comments?
Mayor Johnson, Commissioners, there's a service organization in the Dickinson area known as RSVP Plus, Retired Senior Volunteer Program. The plus being that you don't have to be my age to be a part of it. And you'll find retired senior volunteer participants in many different locations in many different capacities across the city of Dickinson. It's my pleasure to be serving as a advisory council member for this organization, and one of the areas you'll find them is in the Amen Food Pantry. We had a report at one of our last meetings that had some very interesting numbers in it that I wanted to share with you and with our viewing public concerning the Amen Food Pantry and some of the things that they've been doing. Just real briefly, in 2013, they gave out 87,998, 989 pounds of food, serving 1,011 households. So far, from January to the end of April 2014, they've already given out 40,485 pounds of food, serving 707 households. Another thing that really struck me that I wanted to share with everybody was since January of 2014, St. John's Lutheran Church has sponsored something called the Backpack Program. The Backpack Program provides a weekend's worth of food to 196 Dickinson students per week at six local schools. The Amen Food Pantry has provided almost 600 pounds of fresh produce to the program since January. The Amen Food Pantry also supplements the backpacks with additional individually wrapped product when available. When I heard that in the meeting, the report, it just struck me that there, it's a real positive, a real positive that this group of people, this group of volunteers is providing to the community, and wanted to share that with you and the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Sealock. Anyone else from the public wish to comment? All right, we'll go back then to the sign regulations ordinance. Mr. Coling, are you close?
Commissioner Johnson, I can report on one additional item while, while they're still working.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Kessel.
I'll give you a preview. This was going to be on the commission agenda for next week. The Public Transit Agency, Elder Care, has applied for, or wishes to apply for, a fixed route base system grant from the North Dakota Department of Transportation. It's $150,000 grant, which requires a local match of around $37,000. What this grant would do is they would look at the community as a whole and determine whether or not a fixed route base system would be not only effective in the community, but also could be run efficiently in terms it would pay for itself. The city of Minot has just completed their fixed route planning process, and so that grant opportunity then is available. So, I'll bring some more information with regard to this, and maybe ask Ms. Radikowski to prevent it, or present at our next city commission meeting. It is something that I personally have been asking Ms. Radikowski to study, because I do think that it's, it has value in determining whether a, a fixed route base system, or bus system, would help the transportation needs in the community.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kessel. Mr. Coling?
Mr. President, Commissioner, we would be dealing here with section 39.10.50D2. That section would be amended to read, "No off-premise signs shall be placed within 1,000 feet of any other off-premise sign, provided, however, that off-premises signs in existence prior to May 19th, 2014, that are placed within 500 feet of any other off-premises sign shall be deemed legal non-conforming signs." Paragraph three below would read, "No digital billboard sign may be placed within 1,500 feet of any other digital billboard sign or within 1,000 feet of any other off-premises sign, except as it pertains to signs oriented towards Interstate 94. The spacing distance shall include both sides of the public right of way." The language with respect to legal non-conforming signs would not apply to paragraph three there. We don't have any digital billboard signs currently in town, so there are no signs that we would need to, to grandfather in essentially.
So, I, the way I read, or would assume we'd go, we would first amend the ordinance so we could ask for a motion to make the amendments that Mr. Coling just read? And we could then act on that, and we would then have an amended ordinance, or amended ordinance for second reading, and then act on that.
Correct.
Okay, so you've heard Mr. Coling's recommendation in terms of language for amending the ordinance? If someone agrees with that, would care to move that approval?
I'll move the amendments.
Second?
We have the motion, the second. Is there any other discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Stuckert?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Now, Mr. Cortan's suggestion, I think, was, was to omit some language. Did you have time to get to that?
I did not, but Mr. Cortan did, so, and he gave it to me.
Okay.
So, on this section, Mr. President, we'll be looking at page 11 of the ordinance. This is, again, with respect to on-premises signs. Does not apply to billboards, as we've been discussing. But this would be paragraph C2B, and we would omit the words, or 2B1, "And no single sign face shall exceed 50 square feet in aggregate sign area." The remainder of that paragraph would remain as is. That same langu, language would be, excuse me, would be omitted from paragraph D2B2 with respect to pole signs and pylon signs.
Okay, you've heard their recommendation for that amendment. Would one of you care to move the approval of that amendment?
So, move.
There a second?
Second.
We have the second. It's a further discussion. Go ahead and vote now. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. So, now what you have is an amended draft of ordinance number 1550. That is before you for second reading and final passage. Do you have any other comments? Any other discussion? Not the chair would entertain a motion to approve second reading, final passage of the amended draft of ordinance number 1540.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Jackson, move. Mr. Steiner, seconds. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Stuckert?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So, that motion carries. We've already asked for public issues. I'll ask if there are any issues by Commissioners. Not the chair to entertain a motion then to adjourn.
So, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Those saying nay, the motion carries or adjourned.